And are there any requests for dispensation?
No, no requests.
Okay, item four is public participation in invitation to members of the public to make representations to councillors. Resolutions can only be made on items on the agenda. And I think we only have one member of the public. I'm guessing that's Sandra Reason. Does anyone, members of the public wish to speak? Nope. So we move to item five, which is the exclusion of the press and public. councillor O'Neill.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I, I don't really understand why this is being held in confidential. And I think because of the nature of what this is, what we're discussing here, the very late nature of it, I think the public have a right to know. Because we are dealing with public money here. And, and I can't see anything on the report that would be, that would exclude the press and public. There's no details being released that I can see.
Okay.
So it's for clarity.
Have you got a view on this?
I would say that it has commercial sensitivity, which is why it's been put into the closed session. But any decisions that are taken tonight would have to be recorded in the minutes. So that'll be one way for the public to find out what has occurred in the meeting.
Well, unless I hear otherwise, I will formally propose that we go into exclusion of press and public. Is that seconded? Seconded. Is there any discussion of that? Has anyone else wished to speak? Okay, can I, can we have a roll call please?
Councillor Appleby.
Or.
Councillor Border.
Or.
Councillor Deas.
Or.
Councillor Drummond.
Or.
Councillor Fitzgerald.
For.
Councillor Hood.
Or.
Councillor Holbert.
For.
Councillor Jeffries.
Or.
Councillor Kirby.
Or.
Councillor Lay.
Against.
Councillor O'Neill.
Against.
Councillor Yarrow.
Or.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We will now move into the confidential part. And so we must say goodbye to the members of public.
Okay, remember the public has now left.
Okay. The item six on the agenda is to consider a possible site for a town museum. We have a paper put together by the town clerk and responsible finance officer. Would anyone wish to speak on this item? Councillor Lay.
Yes. In the budget that we prepared for 2021, now that's the budget running into this year. I proposed over and above the funding that we'd set aside for the budget, that we put in what turned out to be an extra £37,000, which was put in as a contingency sum to be used at the council's discretion, obviously, for whatever we needed to use it for in that particular year, which was 2021. Now, I can understand how in 2021, we have used every penny that we could, because we have been asked as a council to do many things that we wouldn't normally have done in the normal year. Now, in 2122, we should still have a surplus from the 2021 sum that I got voted through to go in. So in theory, we should have £37,000 in the budget, more than we actually will have budgeted for. So what I'm saying to you is this, that if that is the case, where is the £37,000? What did we use it for? And will it be available to fund the museum in 2122? Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor. I will turn to the responsible finance officer. My impression was, I'm not certain that it was your proposal or indeed whose proposal was, but the amounts that was put into the budget that year was meant to increase our reserves, I believe, which had fallen to low levels. Our responsible finance officer, can you comment?
The £37,000, I'm not sure where that, where are you referring to that from?
We actually, I proposed and we voted through, and I don't know whether it was 37 or whether it was 27,000. But after you'd actually prepared the budget for 2021, and we, we were voting on it, we then allowed an extra sum to be put in, which I proposed, to be added to the budget as a contingency, or we put into reserves.
Okay, so we had another project reserves, as I recall, put in. It was £34,500.
Well, that's probably correct.
It would have been handy to know that you wanted this information about exactly where that's gone before this meeting, because I can't just get it out.
That's all right. No, no, I'm, I'm not so concerned about where it went, because it would have been spent wisely during a very difficult year. All I'm really saying is that over and above the budget that we had for that particular year, we did budget in case we had, had something coming up where we didn't have funds for.
Okay, so all of that, all of, sorry.
It's all right, please, please.
All of that £34,500 has been, over the year, has been, and there've been environments passed to move that out into other areas, again, of which I can't tell you off the top of my head.
So, Mr Mayor, what I'm basically saying to you is, I know we used that money wisely in 2021. What I'm saying to you is that there was probably that £34,000 still in the budget for the year 2122. And if that was the case, then perhaps we should look to be drawing on that for what we need if we're going to support the museum. And that's my bit said. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Lay. I will only respond to say that we, I think everyone is aware that the budget was very tight this year, that we had to withdraw from reserves to make certain that we didn't increase the precept. So I don't know where, what this amount was. I remember that a certain amount was put towards increasing our reserve, but we couldn't in fact do that because the money was so tight. But thank you for that, councillor Lay. Would anyone else like to speak?
Yeah, thanks. Just a question. Do we know what our reserves are?
Yes. So when you get the income and expenditure in finance and policy, you also get the reserves each month as they stand, which also gives the general fund. As at the 28th of February, including our current year fund and our general fund, we're standing at 505,417. Now, 134,000 just over is, is general fund. And so hold. Let me just do a quick calculation. Hold on a second for the reserves, the earmarked reserves. Sorry, bear with me.
375.
Councillor 375. Is this all, I'm just asking the question, this is all our reserves, is it, when you give us?
Right, okay. So the earmarked reserves are standing at 182,529.
So what's the 550? I mean, I.
Okay, so then on top of that, we have our general fund, 134,000. And then it also includes, the total that I gave you also includes our current year fund of 188. So that's still money from the current year.
That's money that has to be budgeted for, is that what you're saying?
This is all part of our, this is part of our total equity. So our earmarked reserves are 182,500.
And general reserves is 134,000.
134 just over.
And our auditors say that we should have 25%.
Yeah, it's not quite simple as that. Basically, the, I've just done some work on that just now, before we came on. So it's not just a quarter. Basically, you can take off, so basically, you look at your precept, and then you take off your loan repayments amount for the year, and you take off any capital project amounts for the year, such as the clock tower in this case. And then it's a quarter of that figure. So I'm looking at this year, as we were, we were aiming to get, we were aiming to get, bear with me, 137,000 in the general fund. And we are actually just at the moment 134. So we're actually doing really well with that. Next year, I've done a quick forecast for next year, because obviously some of the figures are slightly different. We have less capital project amounts that we have to take off. So we will need, for next year, we will need to have a general fund of 139, just under 139.
So to summarise, if I'm correct, that despite a difficult year, we've retained a reasonable level of reserve, but it's slightly below what is we advised to have from our external auditors. Is that correct?
Yes, but we have inter, well, yes, internal auditors, really. Isn't it? We have jumped a huge amount, though. We have, we have done really well. I do forecast there being, again, we're only a month, well, less than a month from the year end figures, and I've had a quick look through. And there will be some, quite, you know, quite underspends on, on some more than others in certain committees, such as community and leisure, leisure particularly, a lot of underspend there for obvious reasons. Although, having said there's an underspend, you have throughout the year made decisions or discussed, if not made the resolutions at this step, but at this stage, that you would want to create some new earmarked reserves, for example, for the certain events that we run every year, and such like.
And we're looking to use some of that underspend on the public realm project?
Yes, including that. So I'm confident that we'll be able to do that.
It's a complicated situation, and clearly we weren't intending to look in detail at the budgets, but I understand the reason we're exploring this. Okay, anyone else wish to speak? Councillor Yarrow.
You're on.
Unmuted.
I'm mute. I beg your pardon. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I will premise what I have to say by saying that, in principle, I support the concept of the town museum totally. And the coach house is undoubtedly well located. But the rent of £30,000 per annum for six years is only the rent. There are running costs, staff, utilities, legal fees. And I think it would be both cavalier and rather irresponsible to make, to jump back and say, yes, we'll do it just because we're being threatened that it's going to be sold to, or rented to it, to another organisation. There are very few, there's no budget being allowed for this. It'd be irresponsible of us. It clearly would damage the coronavirus support budget, the contingency funds. And so what do we do? We charge Newmarket's residents more? We increase the precept? Is that what we have to do? I think myself, again, also, it's most undoubtedly, there's absolutely no consultation if we do it overnight, in effect. That's just not right. We weren't elected to do that. It's irresponsible. And I think the West Suffolk District Council should be putting community before profit. Now, I mentioned before, and I will again, if you consider Mildenhall and District Museum, in the 1980s, the much lamented Forest Heath District Council gave two cottages at peppercorn rent to the museum there, and also an interest free loan for five years. And at the end of that five years, that loan was then converted to a gift. As a consequence of the generosity of then Forest Heath District Council, in 2012, Heritage Lottery Fund then contributed considerable amount of money. So we see what we have in Mildenhall now. So why can't West Suffolk District Council do the same for Newmarket? It seems to me that the district council is quite, is not slow to impose additional charges on Newmarket residents, parking, for example. But they see little, little enthusiasm to support this town in areas where they could. And they could, as I say, put community before profit and offer us the, the coach house at a peppercorn rent in similar terms. And if I could ask our town councillors, who are also on the district council, have you made representations on behalf of the town in this regard?
Thank you, councillor Yarrow. Councillor O'Neill, and then councillor Drummond.
Thank you. Well, Kevin, you said a few things there that I wanted to say. I wrote some thoughts down, which I don't often do, but this has moved me to do so. I think the biggest problem we face with our district council is half of our district councillors don't even live in the town. A third of them don't even have any link to the town through work or anything. It seems bizarre that two district councillors are seeking to gain revenue for their district employer from the town council that they serve or should indeed serve. Add into that that they did absolutely nothing for the town museum project for the four years combined that they were mayor. Funny that they jump on my idea at the very moment a contract is being signed, right before an election. What a surprise. I'm surprised the cinema wasn't thrown in as well. On top of that, I'm disgusted with the district council for attempting to profiteer from Newmarket Town Council. Nine million pounds spent on Mildenhall Hub, 15 million for Berry Hub, and then we get, no, we want our £100,000 investment back on the coach house. Absolute rubbish. It's an outrage that they're so clearly inept. And surely the scandalous profiteering from Newmarket car parks would be payment enough for our residents.
Thank you, councillor O'Neill. Councillor Drummond.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm really going to answer some of Kevin's questions, so I'm not putting any proposals up at this point. So hopefully you'd allow me to speak again, if necessary. And, Mr Mayor, please, may I thank you for bringing this to us tonight so that we can at least discuss it. So the coach house was used as a site office for the refurbishment of Palace House, and Graham Construction were in there for the period. I know quite a lot about it, because I was the chairman of the project executive board under Forest Heath when I was the portfolio holder for leisure and culture. And at the time, the director of the museum, Chris Garibaldi, he was asked, did he want to have the, the coach house to use as part of the museum? That wouldn't have been a town museum. That would have been used as part of the racing museum. And he didn't feel confident enough to commit to it at that point, because the museum was so new. And the suggestion was that it was put out for three years to recover the refurbishment costs. So about £100,000 was spent on it. And it was, it was looked that they would try and rent it out for three years. I think everybody would accept that in three years' time, we might have our ducks better lined up to do something. And it might have been in three years' time that it would have come back at a peppercorn rent to some entity, whether it's the town council or the town museum, to rent it at a peppercorn rate. But that didn't happen. It's been put out, and the company in Cambridge, I believe they are accountants, are on the verge of signing a six-year lease. So it just means that this property will not be available for at least six years. And that's why, it was really councillor Hood that identified the six years, and has, has really tried to see if there's anything we can do by equaling the offer to steal it. Now, even if we decide tonight that, yes, we'll put that offer in, it doesn't guarantee we'll get it. But it just, you know, it, it might, there's a small possibility. So that's all I say for now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, councillor Drummond. I'll note that you would like to speak once more, and I'll accept that as an explanation of the situation that we are in. Councillor Hood.
Yeah, I'm happy to respond to some of the entertaining remarks from our colleagues here. So I was assuming Kevin was perhaps being ironic when he referred to the much lamented Forest Heath, because you possibly don't know, not having been in your role that long.
No, I was quoting you, and I've been a resident in, in Newmarket for quite a long time, and indeed in Suffolk. I know Forest Heath quite well. Thank you. So no entertainment value, no entertainment value there. Thank you.
I don't think you're supposed to be interrupting me. However, I don't think Forest Heath is lamented at all. They did give things to Mildenhall, as, as the mayor knows, and they did give things to Brandon. What we got was our town museum, and our, not town museum, the National Horse Racing Museum, they've been very supportive of. And as councillor Drummond has said, and this is where the facts are wrong, evidently it was offered to Chris Garibaldi at a peppercorn rent some time ago. And he was the director of the museum. And for whatever reason, he didn't accept it then. Now, the, the continuing facts are that the, as councillor Drummond has said, that Forest Heath then restored the coach house and put it into a position where it could be rented. And actually, I don't really wish to get into the, you know, the political sort of, not quite point scoring that we've heard from one or two people. But the reality is that it, and this was said to me actually, by West Suffolk, the coach house has been on the rental market for, during, Mayor, I'm afraid during your term of office, and nobody from the town council, or the, the, quote, leadership of the town council, has thought to speak to West Suffolk about it. And one of the things that was said to me was, this property has been on the market all this time, since the summer, I think. And the town council is now suddenly talking about perhaps wanting to rent it, we're on the verge of signing. So I might suggest that others could possibly have stepped up to the mark and looked into this. That didn't happen, but it was on the market and everybody, nobody did anything. So I think we need to move beyond the childish point scoring and just decide if people think it's worth pursuing. And we know we may not get it anywhere. Councillor O'Neill, I suspect you possibly missed what I was saying, but your facts were wrong. So I don't want to go over it. Let's just, you know, move on to discussing the reality rather than overstating cases.
Thank you, councillor Hood. I would like, I do support councillor Hood. I think we shouldn't make this personal in any way whatsoever. It's an important decision. And there is, should not be any point scoring at all. It's about saying what you think and what you believe, and what is the right thing for Newmarket Town Council. Would anyone else like to speak? And by the way, clearly you can answer someone's questions, and that goes both ways. Anyone else wish to speak at this point? Councillor Kirby.
Thank you, Mayor. I've read the documents and, and seen the accounts, and I don't think we can justify spending that much money on it. I think pressure has to be put on West Suffolk. I think people say that it's been available and whatever, but I think pressure has to be put on West Suffolk. If we really want the town museum, then they have to re, they have to rethink what they want to charge us. If this other company come in and take it, well, so, so be it. But I don't think we should jump in straight away with the amount of money that we're talking about. And really, we haven't seen anything, any costings from what the museum is going to generate, what additional costs there are, as I think, as councillor Yarrow said, on business rates, utilities, staffing. It's 30,000, it could be 50,000. So I think we really have to think seriously about this. If the, if it's not signed on the dotted line, then West Suffolk still have a property that nobody wants. So let's wait and see.
Right. Who else would like to speak?
Well, could I just pop in on the, on that last comment, to say, that's absolutely right. If they don't sign, we're in a much better position. And the reason that, you know, that, and I'd like to say thank you too, for the mayor, for ramping up this meeting tonight, because, you know, if it's gone for six years, it's gone. If they don't sign, it's a whole different thing. But, you know, we are discussing whether we might, you know, I mean, looking at the report and hearing what one or two people have said, you know, would appear to be that people are nervous about the financial side. And if these people don't sign, you know, it's a whole different matter. Thanks.
I'm going to speak from the chair, because I think it's important that I give my opinion. I think West Suffolk Council have known all along that we would like the old coach house to be the town museum. We put it in the neighbourhood plan. And they are said that you can't state where you want your town museum. You have to say vaguely that we would support a town museum. So I don't think they've ever been not known that. And I would argue that our district councillors, knowing what our neighbourhood plan says, could have chased it up. It's very difficult for people who aren't on the district council to be able to chase things up like that. But the most important thing, apart from the fact that we do want a town museum, and we would like it to be in the old coach house, is in fact that we haven't got time to plan sufficiently well for the costs that will be incurred to the council. We've come out of a difficult year in which we made certain that we haven't raised the precept because of the terrible position so many people are in as a result of this pandemic. And I do have to refer back to something that happened before the pandemic arose. No, no, it's just at the end of the pandemic, just at the beginning of the pandemic, when we decided to raise the pension contributions from 5% to 10%. And I was accused of being incompetent, because that gave, the expenditure was an extra £5,000. This is possibly £50,000 a year. And to do it without a detailed report on how the finances are going to be managed, I think, would be incompetent. As much as I desire, as much as I would love to spend £50,000 a year and have a town museum that we could call our own and to be proud of, I can't in all conscience agree to it. So that is my position. Councillor, councillor, you did speak at length at the beginning. I think councillor Drummond is, did you want to speak now, councillor Drummond? I allowed you to speak for, in a sense of explanation, now we can have your opinion perhaps.
Okay, well, obviously, I would vote for it, but it's a straight shootout of for or against, really, so.
No, I do need to have a proposal on the table. We haven't got a proposal.
Right, well, look, so you've got a proposal on the table. I'll second your proposal, but I don't have to vote that way.
Well, I think councillor O'Neill was about to propose something. Yes, councillor O'Neill.
I, I would think any proposal we make would be that we contact the district council and implore them to start working for the residents of Newmarket, and not be trying to charge fees to us for a town museum, and start working for Newmarket.
Right. Can we have that sort of slightly change to being the, something like, we desire a town museum, and we believe the old coach house would be the most appropriate place for a town museum, but that but that the district council should provide it at a peppercorn rent? Would that be a re-interpretation of your words? Okay, I've got you propose those words. Is that seconded? Is that seconded? We seek the old coach house at a peppercorn rent?
Yes, true.
Thank you. That's councillor Appleby. Well, we now have a proposal on the table, and it's, I think it's still a for or against.
I wish to make an amendment.
Yes, councillor Lay, an amendment.
If you have a look at our agenda for tonight to to consider the possibility of the sighting of the town museum and all the paperwork that's gone with it was to fund it. Now, if you're saying we can't afford to fund it, then I think that we should, our proposal ought to be that at this point in time, Newmarket Town Council cannot afford to fund the town museum from West Suffolk Council.
I'd second that.
Thank you, okay. So there is an amendment. It's not much of an amendment, it's virtually rewriting, but I'll accept it as an amendment, which obviously we would. So your your proposal is that at this stage, Newmarket Town Council cannot afford to pay West Suffolk Council for a town museum. Councillor Drummond.
Thank you. Potentially another amendment. I I'm all for you writing to to West Suffolk Council. And I think you need to express our disappointment in the fact that they are leasing it for six years. You know, if it had been leased for three years, I think we probably wouldn't even be having this meeting tonight. But six years kicks it really into touch. And if we're writing a letter expressing points of view rather than, you know, committing to find the money to step in in a commercial sense, because it's been put on the commercial market, somebody is willing to buy it, effectively, or lease it. And if that fell through, where would we be? It would go back on to the commercial market again. So I think if we want to be clever here, if it were to fall through, we really need to make sure that if it put, if it's put up again, that they absolutely do not offer it for six years. Because in in, we've gone through the maths, a hundred K, thirty K a year. They get their money back. It could ultimately, at that period of time, come to us on a peppercorn basis.
Okay, thank you councillor Drummond. That that actually was quite helpful and it's gave me a time to think about how I'm going to handle this amendment. What I'm going to do is, because I should take the amendment first, is is indeed to do that. But before you rush to raise your hands, and we'll have a roll call anyway, I I would like, I will accept a second amendment, councillor O'Neill, along the lines of what we stated. In other, and taking on councillor Drummond's point of view, that we're disappointed that it's for six years and not three years. And the business about, we think we, that it ought to be provided at a peppercorn rent. So in other words, if everyone is in agreement, we will first of all have a vote that says Newmarket Town Council cannot afford at this time to pay thirty thousand pounds a year for the rent for of the old coach house for a town museum. Councillor Lay, is that correct, those words?
Those were my words.
Okay, so that was seconded by councillor Kirby. Is there any further discussion on that?
Can we have a recorded vote, please, Mayor?
We could, of course, have a recorded vote.
Thank you.
So that's easily done with these roll calls. So does everyone understand that to vote for this means that we will not seek to rent at thirty thousand pounds a year? So voting for, not renting. Does everyone understand that? I'm getting confused here. Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Councillor Border.
Or?
Councillor Yarrow.
Or?
Councillor Drummond.
Against.
Councillor Fitzgerald.
For.
Councillor Hood.
Against.
Councillor Holbert.
Against.
Councillor Jeffries.
For.
Councillor Kirby.
Or?
Councillor Lay.
Against.
Councillor O'Neill.
Or?
Councillor Yarrow.
Or?
And finally councillor Appleby.
Or?
Okay.
Okay, that was passed. Now councillor O'Neill, perhaps Julie could, did you manage to take down the councillor O'Neill's proposal concerning?
Oh, we desire a town museum but unable to fund the rent fees and believe coach house best placed. West Suffolk provide a peppercorn rent. No, not really.
Okay, I I'll try and come up with the phrasing again. Newmarket Town Council would like to have a town museum at the old coach town, but believes that West Suffolk Council should offer it at a peppercorn rent. And we are disappointed indeed that they are setting a lease for six years. Is that right, councillor?
Mayor, I know I'm just going back, but can I just go back to our vote? Councillor Lay proposed something, you're voting against it, is that correct?
That is absolutely correct, I noticed that.
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
It's all right. Don't worry councillor Kirby, strange things happen.
The other two voted against it.
I thought it was me.
No, no, don't worry.
You proposed, but it's okay. Okay.
Right, we now have a proposal, as I've said, that is councillor O'Neill's proposal. Is that seconded? But I'll second it because I came up with it. Councillor Drummond, are you speaking?
Well, sorry, I I was seconded again.
Oh, lovely, excellent. Right, let's go to, we know, let's go to a roll call on this one then.
And you just repeated it again, so.
Oh, that's, that's tough, this is.
Somebody.
Third time. Newmarket Town Council should should write to West Suffolk Council saying we would like to have a town museum at the old coach house, but believe that West Suffolk Council should offer it at a peppercorn rent. And we are disappointed that they are in fact leasing it for six years. And I'm not saying it again.
Okay, can we have a recorded vote too?
Yes.
Julie. And you have something in that recommendation that says that a town museum is in the neighbourhood plan and West Suffolk did know about that.
Yes, certainly I would take that as an amendment to say that the the having a town museum, the is in our neighbourhood plan and was originally requested that it was the old coach house. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councillor Yarrow.
Or?
Councillor Drummond.
For.
Councillor Fitzgerald. Okay, I'll come back to councillor Fitzgerald, councillor Hood.
For.
Councillor Holbert.
For.
Councillor Jeffries.
Or?
Councillor Kirby.
Or?
Councillor Lay.
Or?
Councillor O'Neill.
Or?
Councillor Yarrow.
Or?
Councillor Appleby.
Or?
And finally councillor Border.
Or?
And Councillor Gerald, thank you.
For.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much councillors. That ends our meeting tonight. I'm sorry to have taken up so much of your time, but it is clearly worth discussing. And look forward to seeing you all on Monday.
Thank you very much.
Hope you have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you very much. Good night, everybody.
Good night, Peter.